More than 15 seconds.
Can you hear us?
I can hear whoever just spoke.
That's me, Trish.
Okay, I can hear you.
Good morning, Jeff. This is Jean. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I'm happy.
Fantastic. We're happy as well. All right, well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this new and slightly revised meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. For those of you may not be able to see if you're watching online, but we are all appropriately social-distanced in this room, and we will go ahead and call our meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. Indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
As with a lot of things that are new, we have Commissioner Barth agreed to call in today so we could practice what might be something that someday we might have to do, all of us remotely, and so we appreciate him agreeing to be with us. Jeff, you were kind of like an echo for us during the pledge, so we got to hear it in stereo, which we appreciated. So, thank you. All right, so this is just a reminder to go ahead and silence your cellphones, and we have Carol here if you need a listening device. And we're going to go ahead and start the meeting with the topic that's been on everybody's mind. We're going to get a COVID-19 update, and we're going to start with Jason Gierman, our emergency manager. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Just to give you a brief update on what's going on over on my end, which I'm a part of the Emergency Operations Center, which includes people from the Health Department, city offices, city emergency management, and we have contact with fire and police through that for the critical services portion. I'll just give you a little update on the information that I have, and it's the same information that anybody can get from the covid.st.gov site. Currently, positive is 28 cases, negative is 762. Pending, there's 265. And of course, many of you know the majority of the cases right now are in Beadle County. Minnehaha still listing at five, and then two in McCook, and then they're kind of scattered throughout. Age groups rating from 19 years of age all the way up to 80 years. So, you know, younger people are getting it too and getting tested. The pattern is throughout the country is the more tests that are given, the higher it's getting. It's getting really high in New York because they're really pumping out a lot of tests. As soon as we get the testing here, I'm assuming that that pattern will rise. It seems to be doing the same thing throughout all the states, and obviously, we're trying to mitigate that exposure rate by doing the things that the CDC recommends with the businesses. And I know I spoke to Commissioner Bender earlier, that the city's in discussion about what that's going to look like with the CDC guidelines, and that direction will probably have to come from the county to the cities within the county, and then we also have those local businesses out in the county that we have to decide what to do with. So, with that, I will leave it with any questions you guys have for me that I may or may not be able to answer.
Commissioner Karski.
Yesterday Sanford and O'Vera both announced that they would be able to run hundreds of tests. Do you know what? I don't know if I saw the turnaround time on those test results. Are you aware of anything?
They're still having discussion about that, but I'm not aware of the turnaround time, but I think that's going to get better and better as we go, and they have the equipment to do it, so.
Commissioner Heiburger.
South Dakota Association of County Commissioners are planning a phone call for later again today. We did talk about this last night a little bit, as to do we want to try to unify as counties across the state. Obviously, we can't force anybody to do anything, but at least the leadership, Board of Directors, will have a discussion about what the different counties on the Board of Directors are doing, and whether we send out a letter to the rest of the counties with at least suggestions, because like I said, we can't force anybody to do anything they don't want to do, so.
A unified message is always good, and that's kind of what we're trying to put out, and that's part of the reason, that's one of the main reasons for the EOC, is so we're still giving out the same, I'm getting the same information that everybody else is getting. So, if you guys have questions, I encourage it, you know, shoot me an email, and I can find the answer, because I do have access to all those people.
And I would, I think after we get done with the whole presentation on this COVID update, we'll have some conversation here with us about what actions, if any, we would like to take next. I would really like to just give a shout-out to Jason and all the folks that are overworking at the Emergency Operations Center every day through the weekend, and I've had an opportunity to go over there. It's an amazing brain trust of people over there that touch all different aspects of our community and who are, you know, working hard, and it's the genesis of a lot of the great things that have come out, you know, solutions for the community. The mayor and his staff have been kind of all hands on deck and have really come up, worked with community partners to come up with a lot of solutions, like, you know, childcare for healthcare workers, so healthcare workers can come to work knowing that their kids are well cared for and taken and safe. And so, I just really appreciate all the work that you do in representing Minnehaha County over there, so thank you.
There's a lot of information coming there. Just to give you an example, I get the same email maybe four or five times, and to filter all through that, you know, I may miss a couple of things, but I try and get out the most important information that I can to you guys. There is, it is a hard-working group over there. We're learning things, too. We're trying to increase our capabilities to shrink the EOC personnel to do it that way, so we're going to see more remote listening and remote participation that way, too, so.
Yeah, but there's one positive. We're all going to be a lot better at remote meetings when this all ends, so, all right, well, thank you.
Thanks.
So, next, I think I'm going to invite Auditor Litz to come up and give an update about the upcoming city and school board election. I know Tom Greco's here as well, so you might have an opportunity to visit as well. It's an issue that's on a lot of people's minds, and I know you guys have been working hard on this, so if you'd just give it up.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak here today. This weekend, Mr. Greco and I, we've been talking a lot about this election and, you know, election workers, precincts, all these things as they come together, and we made the determination that, from our respective positions, that we think it would be very good if this election was postponed until the primary June 2. And, you know, the reason that I would like to say that is I don't think we've got enough information out there to make an informed choice as to whether or not to have them, so my idea is always going to be to fail safe. You know, we've got about 80% of our election workers are age of 60 and over. We've got polling places right now that are not calling us back, because they're kind of in a wait-and-see position. We've got one of them, Prince of Peace, we just thought, there's no way we're going to go there. So, when we start thinking about the ramifications on our personnel and the places that we have to do, it's going to be very difficult for us to pull this election off on the 14th. Right now, Mr. Greco has got his ballots and his programming, I believe, you know, and after the 2nd of this month, I've got to start putting that stuff in also, because we are both proceeding like we are going to have this election. And after the 2nd, I'm going to spend about $40,000 on ballots that, you know, I certainly hope we're going to use. You know, I like to take my cues from the medical community that we have here, and I think right now their idea is to fail safe as well. Two weeks ago, Sanford shut down the Wellness Center, which I'm a member of, and that was my first cue that this is a medical facility shutting down their health place because of concerns about the disease. So, then I, you know, it's home here to roost. Like I say, I'm, we haven't heard anything back. I had some conversations yesterday with Secretary of State's office. They had some pointed questions about how the conduct of these elections would happen if we do put it off until the 2nd. And what I believe at this point is that if we are allowed to not have this election, to put it off, excuse me, until June 2, that Mr. Greco's election and the election that the county would normally hold can be combined. It's complex, for sure. You know, I know I'd have Mr. Greco's help on producing those ballot styles and getting them all out there to the right places, but that is right now what I believe would be the best path forward for elections in Minnehaha County and Lincoln County.
Commissioner Karski.
Would there be two separate ballots then? One for the primary and one for the city election? Or would you have everything on one ballot? Because there's, I mean, with the cities, districts, and everything else, like you said, it...
Yesterday, I did a kind of a thumbnail analysis of the ballot size. Tom's got his ballots down there, the sample ballots, and I looked at it. They've got a 14-inch ballot, it's probably about 2/3 full. I could get a 17-inch ballot and fill it up on both sides. So, I believe combining that election and putting all those races on one ballot is the best path forward. Now, there's details to work out, for sure. It'd involve the state, and it would also involve Lincoln County. And I've not had conversations with Marlene down there, but it would involve Lincoln County doing the same thing down there. People say, "Well, you know, why is Lincoln County going to do that?" We do this, we do this in recounts, where a judicial district wraps around from Minnehaha County and goes down to Lincoln County. We combine those results at the Secretary of State's office. We had a recount last time, I think it was Legislative District 6. We had one of those races reach down into Lincoln County and involve Minnehaha County, and we both separately counted the ballots that were under our jurisdiction, and then when we uploaded the results, Secretary of State, that's how we got our real results. So, I'm thinking, there's a lot of details to work through, but I'm thinking this is very doable.
Can you just explain the process? Like, what would have to take place in order for the election to be moved to June 2, and what is the timing of those decisions?
Well, the Secretary of State, we had conversations with them this weekend and relayed our concerns to them, and they're taking us very seriously. They're working with the Governor's Office, I got to presume, or somebody in the administration. You know, it's hard to get a read on what they're putting out, because it's kind of been silent, but so I really don't know what to say at this point in the game. I'm hoping I answered your question, is that I just don't...
Do you have authority yourself to change this election?
No, no. Let's be very clear about that. No, I do not. This is what I got up here right now, is a little public presentation, and, you know, I hope that my feelings and Mr. Greco's feelings about this election go out.
So, who has the authority to change the...
The state. The state legislature and the governor.
Okay.
They're going to meet pretty soon here for Veto Day. I don't know if this would be a thing that they would pop up and address. I just don't know the answers. I think there's, people are, you know, the governor has been a little reluctant, because she feels she has no statutory authority to make this decision, and she may be right. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not trained in that, but at some point here, you know, somebody's got to make a good, hard decision, go with the call, and live with that.
And when do you think you would need to have, I mean, if you don't receive guidance from the legislature, by what date will you have to decide, okay, this election is on, and that's when we're...
We are, we are going forward like it's on right now with our absentee voting. I'm getting Science to Mark. We're moving the absentee voting across the street, over to our election center. I'm getting some signage made up for the front of the building, and then very clear from the street where absentee voting will be. Like I say, on the 2nd, that is my drop-dead time to start entering my precincts, candidates, the number of ballots that I'm going to do, and I'm going to spend $40,000, you know, on the 2nd and the 3rd for election, things that I hope we're going to use, so.
April 2. We're talking April 2.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, April 2. And Mr. Greco, like I said, has already spent the money on his ballots and programming, and those are things, we're just going forward like they're, like we're going to, we have to, at this point, going forward like we're going to have the election on April 14.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Might be a good time for citizens to contact their legislators in their area and encourage them to bring this forward on that last day of legislation.
You know, the question's been brought up by the Secretary of State, and it's no small matter. There's a lot of municipal elections and school board elections going out all over the state of South Dakota, and I think the number was in the 70s. Yesterday, I contacted all the municipalities and the school districts in Minnehaha County and found out what kind of elections they're going to have, when they're going to have them, if they have them, and I relayed that information up to the Secretary of State because they wanted that. You know, the idea of a smaller jurisdiction being much more flexible than this city is appealing, but they'd need authority to do that, too, because, you know, a smaller, I know there's some folks out in rural South Dakota going, "Hey, you know, it's not our problem. You know, I mean, we really don't have any infections, and we're not, we're unafraid to go forward with that." Well, then they could make that choice for their school elections and their municipal elections at their leisure if the legislature and the governor would give them that authority.
Commissioner Karski.
The city's under Home Rule Charter. Does that give them special ability to do anything like this? We're not, as a county, Home Rule Charter, does the charter address any of this, Mr. Greco?
Commissioner and commissioners, thank you for having me here. Tom Greco, Sioux Falls City Clerk. The charter does address it in that we follow the general election laws of the state, so we don't have that flexibility on our own.
Anything else? Well, thank you. Thank you for the hard work you guys are doing in these somewhat uncertain times. So, I think next, Carol Muller, County Administrative Officer, is going to come forward and give some updates just on the work that we've been doing here at the county, changes that we've made here in the last week.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Muller, Commission Office. I just wanted to summarize a lot of discussions and actions that we've been taking place here in order to make sure that county government remains functioning and open for business for people. So, as of last Friday at 5:00 p.m., we closed the buildings, unless your essential buildings, such as law enforcement, obviously stays open. Health and Human Services is open, but you're being screened when you go into there. But, for instance, in the admin building, the doors are all locked, except when we're having a public meeting. We have a deputy downstairs taking care of that. We have made available on the front of the doors, in the website, and through public information, how you can still do business with the county to make sure you can still get your license plates taken care of. Facilities has implemented additional cleaning and made sure that they've bumped up their supplies level that are out there. IT has beefed up the broadband and remote licenses, so we can have, continue to have more people over time work at home. And HR has been reviewing and updating policies based upon the commission's adoption of making advanced PTO available and the federal government's Family First Initiative. This is like the tip of the iceberg of a lot of conversations that we've had, but did want to share with you a few things that are just taking place.
Thank you. Any questions for Carol? No, I mean, the county's no different than anybody trying to run a business. Everybody's trying to make a lot of decisions, change a lot of business practices in a pretty short amount of time. Here at the county, we adopted Zoom, got our first Zoom accounts last week, and we're all thankful that it's a pretty user-friendly application, and have started having a lot of meetings remotely, and business has continued on, even though we're not able to interact face-to-face as much with the public. We already had procedures in place where the public could get most of their business done via telephone, via internet, or via mail, and so we will continue to work through those issues, but we are here to serve the citizens of Minnehaha County, just in a slightly different way.
Correct.
So, okay, thank you. So, finally, I just wanted to have a conversation a little bit as commissioners about, the governor issued an executive order yesterday, giving some more baseline guidance to counties as to, and businesses and, you know, entities across the state as to what are best practices, I guess, in these times, and has really publicly a couple of times now, since this weekend, invited cities and counties to take additional actions if they believed it was necessary for their community. We saw that happen in Beadle County this weekend, when there was evidence of community spread there. Rapid City has taken similar action, and, you know, I've been on, was on a pretty lengthy call yesterday with mayors of cities in Minnehaha and Lincoln County, a couple commissioners from Lincoln County. Commissioner Karski was on it as well. And, you know, there is, I think, a desire that we, if we're going to take action, that we all try to move forward in a somewhat unified manner, based on data and science, and, you know, make wise decisions, given the information that we have. And so, what I would suggest, and what I would like to see us do, is schedule an emergency meeting for Friday of this week, so that we can have it set aside, we can give public notice, meet our statutory obligations, but have the ability by the end of this week to take additional action, if necessary, based on new data that comes out this week, as we heard from Jason Gierman, and as we've heard from other public officials over the last couple of days. There is certainly reason to believe that a lot more tests are going to become available this week, which will give us a lot more data points to decide what might be best for the citizens of Minnehaha County. I know the city has convened their Board of Health and are looking at evidence to try to decide what might be the best step forward for the city. So, I'm interested to hear from other commissioners if anybody has other thoughts, or if that sounds like a good plan to move forward, so we'd have an opportunity to take action before this weekend, when additional activities might take place. Commissioner Benega.
I would just say my concern is, is the fact that since we haven't really received any significant orders from the governor's administration, that currently, we're just taking a problem that's somewhat limited in Sioux Falls and pushing it further out into the county, to some of the rural communities. And I think it's important for us to jointly solve the problem, and I think the only way we're going to do that is have similar ordinances and resolutions to make this work, so that we're affecting a larger group that is protecting everybody, rather than just moving the problem in a different location.
And I think that was the concern of the mayors and the Lincoln County commissioners on the call yesterday, is that, you know, we don't necessarily want Sioux Falls to take an action and then push some of the activity that was going on last weekend, where people didn't seem to be taking the social distancing mandate seriously enough, and then move that activity out into Minnehaha County or Lincoln County. And so, and, you know, I think we're just, we're all waiting for additional data to make sure that we're making the, you know, the very best decision. You know, these are really, really hard decisions. I mean, anybody that's, you know, businesses don't want to voluntarily close, I get that. Then they have to tell their employees that they don't have a paycheck likely, and that's not easy. And, you know, we don't want to take action to close down businesses temporarily either, because we recognize that has significant economic ramifications. And, you know, we are just all here balanced in this, you know, kind of very difficult choice between health and economy. I just personally believe that if we don't get the health issue, you know, if we take action that lets the health issue get out of control, then it's going to just delay the hope that the economy can get back in place. And so, but I don't want to take action without data and science and, you know, wisdom and prayer and all of those things. And so, that's why I think if we have a meeting scheduled for Friday, we should have an opportunity for significantly more data to come in, hopefully, so we can make the best decision based on the information available. Commissioner Karski.
I guess what I'm looking at and thinking is, my day job being in insurance, if everything is burning around you, you do what you can to keep your stuff from burning, too, and it's too late to call your insurance agent if everything's on fire. And that's where we're at. I mean, this is like a fire just burning around us, and we got to, we have to do something. We have to prevent people from getting sick, and the medicine is going to be very difficult to swallow, and it's going to be closing businesses. And we're not closing them for days or weeks. It's probably going to be well into late May and maybe even into mid-June. So, anything we do is going to have some very long-term ramifications. If we have a meeting on Friday, are you thinking morning, afternoon? We have our noon conference call. Are you thinking doing it at 2:00?
I was, my preference would be to do it at 1:30 or 2:00, if that worked for everyone. And we could call in for folks that needed to call in, but that's what, my preference would be to schedule it for 2:00. I know our legal team, our state's attorney, has been looking at, you know, our legal authority to do this. Everybody's trying to figure out who has legal authority, and we could certainly debate that, but I think the governor, in her executive order yesterday and in her public comments, has been clear that she is delegating, for right now anyway, that authority to us, and so we have a duty to act. Okay, Commissioner Heiburger.
I would just suggest that until Friday, people strongly consider what they're doing. I think Sioux Falls, a lot of, a lot of the businesses have shut down, and in the rural counties, if you would please consider shutting down your businesses or changing the way your practices are working, because you're right, you drive around the county, and people from Sioux Falls are going elsewhere, or they're going West River on vacation, because it's safe there. So, just be thinking about what you're doing and make wise decisions, because we may have to make the tough decision come Friday, but that doesn't mean you can't make the decision before us.
And to be fair, a lot of people have voluntarily closed their business or voluntarily followed the guidelines that are out there by the CDC and that are included in the governor's executive order. So, there are a lot of people that aren't, but it is really hard. And I mean, I've got, I've got a college student that's home living with me again now, and, you know, that age group, you just feel pretty bulletproof when you're that age. And, but, you know, all the guidance out there is that it's important that they follow these guidelines just like the rest of us, so that we can cut down on this community spread, you know, flatten the curve. We've all heard the lingo, but it has very real ramifications. And if you, you know, need a wake-up call, go out and see what's going on in Europe right now and see that we do have to take this seriously, so.
Is Commissioner Barth still on the phone? Usually, he'd be piping up by now.
Usually, I would, but I'm happy to listen.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, we will go ahead and schedule a meeting for Friday at 2:00 p.m. All right, I think that is the end of our COVID update for now. So, that takes us to routine business, which honestly, it's kind of nice to do something that's routine for a little bit. The first item would be to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Since Commissioner Barth agreed to be our guinea pig and do remotely, we'll get to do roll call vote for everything. So, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for March 17, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $887,754.96.
Move for approval?
Motion and a second. Any comments?
No.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that takes us to reports. There are a number of reports there that have lots of really good information in them, including the Juvenile Detention Center report for February 2020 and the annual report for 2019. We have the Public Defender Report for 2019, and the Safe Home Financial Statements for December 2019 and 18. So, that takes us to personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item are abatements for approval. First item is the Iceman Home Parcel 66276, 2019 property taxes in the amount of $461.66. Chris, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Lilly Equalization. Here before you is a mobile home that moved out of Minnehaha County. We were not made aware of it at the time. We have since figured out all the details of that. It had moved to Pennington County, and we have verified that the taxes were paid in Pennington County for 2019, paid 20, so we're asking for an abatement of $461.66.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
The next two are the same situation. Do you want to do them as a pair?
Sure.
Okay. First one is parcel number 38003, elderly freeze. The individual is not aware of the property tax reduction program and has made application and and qualified. So that one is for an amount of $664.46. Item C is parcel number 36402 for property taxes of $645.25. Both of them are recommended for approval.
Move to approve the abatement. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hyperger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
I would just like to mention to the commission too, we've taken some additional steps for the equalization office. I've got 10 people attempting to work from home today for the first time. They're working. We're having some issues getting dialed into the computers and that, but we're trying to eliminate some staffing within our office to facilitate this. And we'll see how it goes. It'll be a good trial run. If nothing else, hopefully it works and if things progress, potentially all of us could potentially be there as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Karski.
Just say, Chris, thank you for doing that. You know, we have to take steps and it's not going to go flawlessly the first time and it's going to take a little bit of work and everybody's just going to have to be patient and work through it. So thank you for taking the lead on that.
All right, thank you. Okay, item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien. Morning.
Good morning, Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. Before you is DPNO 70416 in the amount of $2,568.85. The petitioner is requesting a compromise and release of the lien in full upon payment of $1,472.60. The balance of the lien represents poor relief in 2009 for rent and utilities in the amount of $1,096.25 and legal representation in 2018, 2019 in the amount of $1,472.60. She is hoping that you will consider forgiving the poor relief and is prepared for the, to pay the legal fees. The petitioner has the opportunity to purchase a home under the first-time homebuyer's program for $1,056,900. She has committed to the purchase agreement and is expecting to close on the home on April 3, 2020. She's a single mother and explains in her narrative the various challenges she has overcome and the circumstances leading to the legal fees. Her 2019 income tax shows $35,656 in wages with a refund of $4,063. The application lists assets totaling $2,020 and $21,770 in liabilities. She works two jobs totaling approximately $1,500 in wages every two weeks.
Any questions for Melinda? Is the applicant here?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hyperger.
I'd just make a comment that normally I wouldn't make this comment, but I kind of feel like we should forgive more than just the poor relief, the issues related to her son. And not that she was in legal trouble herself, but trying to get her son back after some issues. And in our present situation, I would like to see this woman stay in her house. And if we take $1,400 out of her pocket, right, when she's trying to move in and we have a huge issue in our economy, I don't know what type of job she has because the, her W-2 forms were not attached to this, but I'm just concerned about getting her in there and keeping her in there. And so I would throw it out there that, what are your thoughts about making, not, not taking the whole $1,472?
Commissioner Karski.
Not surprised she's not here just based on the narrative and she's probably working one of her two or three jobs. I think this individual is very socially responsible from what I can tell and, you know, life has been kind of rough. And I would agree that, that was the same thought that you were. Let's get this woman in a house that she can live with, live in with her son. And she's made a very generous offer that I would like to counter and say, you know, we can maybe something, but $1,400 is probably going to put a dent in more than just the budget. So I'm open to suggestions too.
I guess I would agree with both of you, other than the fact that she's receiving a substantial tax return. And she's worked hard at trying to reduce her liabilities. And frankly, this is one of the more positive applications or petitions that we get because she's actually tried to make payments over time, even if they were relatively small. But that's obvious why that had, had to happen. I guess I, for the amount of money we're talking about, I would agree to do that on this particular petition.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a motion.
I would make a motion that we would settle for $472.60.
I'd second that motion.
Motion, is that too far?
Oh, we, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I guess my response would be is generally speaking, on most petitions, we try to do 50/50. And I guess I would like to stick to that history lesson, if you will. I think if we go against that, we may have some issues in future applications.
So I withdraw my motion and make it for 50% of the 14, 62, 60?
736, 30?
I'm sure I'm going to mess up the ordering here. So we withdrew the motion. Do I need a second to that?
We did.
Okay. Okay, you got, you seconded the withdrawal? Oh, perfect. All right, so now there's a new motion.
New motion is to settle for 50%, so it was 700 and, what'd you say?
$736.30.
$36.30.
Yep.
And was there a second to that?
Yes.
Motion and a second. All right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hyperger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So this is our opportunity for public comment. If there's somebody here with wish to speak about, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commission. Lori Montes, Minnehaha County Human Services. I wanted to just take a couple minutes this morning to offer kind of a positive point, which we all sure could use about now, and highlight one of our staff, Jeff Yarborough, who was the recipient of the Public Citizen of the Year Award by the National Association of Social Workers. And so I wanted to just read you just a piece of what the social workers wrote up about Jeff in regards to this award. Jeff has dedicated his career and much of his personal life to serving the most vulnerable populations and providing them the best services possible by building strong programs and staffing them with dedicated employees. Jeff embodies the meaning of person centered in his approach and dedication to those he serves, both clients and coworkers. Jeff instills passion for the profession for those around him and has inspired many people to pursue careers in mental health. He has a genuine approach that makes him an outstanding and most memorable mentor. He's a hands-on problem solver and is a wealth of knowledge about everything for the, for the origins of songs from the 70s to building teams and organizations to reach their top potential. Those that know Jeff best describe him as the most lovable jerk you will ever meet. His longtime dedication to the needs of society's most marginalized individuals makes him an unsung hero in our Citizen of the Year. So great recognition for Jeff and wanted to make sure you all were aware of that.
Thank you so much. Yeah, very well deserved too. That's great. Anyone else here for public comment this morning? All right, that takes us to regular business. First item in regular business is a public hearing and second reading of rezoning request 20-01. Kevin, good morning.
Yes, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This is a second reading that was advertised for today a few weeks ago for rezoning request. We're getting up, do we have a PowerPoint? The property that is being requested for rezoning is located north and west of South Dakota Highway 115 and County Highway 130. Also commonly referred to as the Renner Corner. And there's the, the map there that's showing the property. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property from A1 Agricultural to C Commercial Zoning District. A public hearing was held on this item by the Planning Commission on February 24th. At that meeting, several neighbors were present and raised concerns for future commercial development, including property values, noise, and potential impact of flooding. The rezoning request was unanimously denied at, by the Planning Commission. If we can move to the next map here. Go up a little more, see what we got. Okay, well, the PowerPoint that was, I think was presented at the, the first reading did show that a good portion of this landscape, FEMA is going through changes in mapping and they'll be rolling out these changes over the next few years through the entire east part of the state. And they've been publishing some of these proposed changes online on a website. And most of this parcel is likely going to be added into the floodplain in the future where it currently is not. So that is one aspect of, of the, the Planning Commission's consideration for denial. The petitioner has worked with us since the February meeting to possibly make the area smaller because he doesn't need the full 20 acres. And I was thinking there's going to be a PowerPoint, but here's a plat, would be a That would kind of abut the, the current commercial and the, the dense residential towards the Renner Corner area there to reduce that size and to remove it from most of the single-family dwellings areas. And you'll see some setbacks there on that. If you were to accept this, I've been working with the petitioner to try to obtain a legal description for that. And this plat is a great exhibit, but it's a proposed plat that doesn't exist. So we would have to, if you're leaning towards approving something like a smaller area like this, we would have to come back another date with a, a legal description of that property. Something to the effect of the south 600 feet or the west, whatever it is, and it would just sound off like that.
It's the parcel one that's identified on?
Yes.
On here that you're talking about?
Okay. And that would be the petitioner's proposed smaller area. So barring any other PowerPoints and photos to show here, the Board of County Commissioners may vote to amend, approve, or deny the proposed zoning ordinance, ordinance rezoning number 2001. Is there any questions?
Commissioner Karski.
If we deny, he's going to have to refile and pay, but if we amend?
So if we deny, he would, in order to come back, he would have to wait six months to reapply and then repay and go through the process again. If you amend it to a smaller area, unfortunately, we don't have a legal description to fully describe out this area, so we'd have to set another hearing date to defer the action.
And how long would it take to parcel that off so that we could amend it? I mean, could it be done in a few weeks?
Yeah, I guess, I would think so. The petitioner's here to maybe help with that answer.
So we could delay the second hearing until April whatever date?
Sure.
And do that?
Excuse me. Commissioner Hyperger.
I would suggest, I don't know how we do with this, but it should go back to the Planning Department because we're basically changing this whole thing, that it should go back, not to the Planning Department, but to the Planning Board and get the right description and get the information better for us. So, and in this present situation, I don't think there's any opponents we're even able to attend. I could be wrong, maybe they're in the other room. I would like to see it go back. I don't want to, I don't want to deny it because I don't want it to go six months, but I would like to see the process work through the way it should so that we get it right.
I think Scott's going to come up and help clarify for us how that would work.
So Scott Anderson, Planning Director, it does not have to go wait six months because it, they only would wait six months if they brought back the identical rezoning request. But because they're substantially reducing it, we would just treat that like a new rezoning request. And then we could just run it through the hearing process at the Planning Commission and rehold the public hearing. And at that point, see if any neighbors have concerns because they still may have concern with the smaller port, a smaller area, but they could also express that at the Planning Commission or here in front of you.
Commissioner Hyperger.
The other thing is if they didn't have any complaints on the smaller one, then it would never even come back here, so it would just be approved by the, by the Planning Board.
It would still come back here because state law requires a rezoning request to have a hearing in front of the Planning Commission and then subsequently additional hearings in front of the County Commission.
Commissioner Hyperger.
One more question. So if we deny it, we'll just start the process over and it'll be fine?
We'll start the process over, yes. And we, they could do that at any time, but they would have to pay, reapply and pay the $350 application fee because we will have to re-advertise and start occurring costs that, for the county, for publication costs and staff time and et cetera.
Commissioner Karski.
I'm not in favor of denying it and making them go through that process, especially if it has to come back here again anyway. If we can get this part plotted out and you can work with your neighbors so that they know what's going on, and I don't know what kind of communication that would require so that we could still do this, but I prefer to just delay it and have it plotted so we have a firm legal description and we can make a decision based on the testimony at that point too.
Commissioner Benega.
Well, I would agree because, first of all, I'm uncomfortable trying to approve or even deny something I don't have a legal description on. I think that just gets us in trouble down the road. I think if the gentleman has the opportunity to talk to his neighbors about, I'm guessing the majority of it's about the flooding issues and figure out how that's going to work, I think maybe we'd be better off to delay it.
Commissioner Hyperger.
This is hard. I think I'm going to respectfully disagree because I think it needs to go through the correct process and I feel like we're missing some of the steps if we just, I just, I just don't think that's right. There's enough people here to pass it if that is the way it goes, but I just think that we should go through the process since we're changing the whole thing and we don't have a legal description. And I don't feel right about the $350, but the other thing is, is it is going to cost our office a lot of extra man-hours and stuff to get the work done whether we defer it or not. It's going to cost them additional dollars to get this, everything straightened out.
Commissioner Barth, I don't want to leave you off. Do you have any comments on this before we move on? This is a public hearing, so we will need to give the proponents and opponents an opportunity to talk.
You know, I appreciate that. At the same time, I, I remember this hearing and the, the neighbors were quite, quite vociferous about their opposition to this, this plan. And if it's been significantly modified, that's fine. But are we really planning to put more stuff in the flood zone here? I think that's, that's my question. Is that the appropriate use for that land? And I think we all know that Renner is pretty soggy. I would rather have people moving out than moving in. And whatever goes there is likely to be submerged. And, you know, the fact that it hasn't flooded in previous years, I, I believe that flooding is going to get worse. And I would rather, again, move buildings out of that area. The neighbors were telling us that their homes, underneath their homes had sand and that even houses that didn't get washed away were sinking in the sand, several inches, some of them. And so I, I'm not supportive of the idea unless I can really maybe see their, the plan that they've got. And if, I'm sorry to go on and on, but if they were to build up this lot, that just forces the water over to their neighbors. And there was actually one neighbor on the other side of Highway 115 that got flooded because the culvert was backed up. because the culvert was backed up going under 115 and flooded their property. So I'm not, I, deferring it makes some sense to me, but I, I'm not supportive of going forward with the project at this point.
Okay. Are there, are there any, do we have the, I'm not sure where that plat went. If we could get it back maybe so we could pass it around up here. All right. So this is a public hearing. If there aren't any specific questions for Kevin right now, I'm going to give the proponents, those in favor of this, an opportunity to speak. If you, if there's anybody here in favor of this, do you guys plan?
If I may, I do have a smaller copy of the plat that I'll just leave here for anybody that comes up.
If you could maybe go give, maybe Craig can make a copy of that so that all, all of us could get one and we could get one to Commissioner Barth later. Thank you.
And Commissioner Barth, if I, if I may?
Absolutely.
The parcel that they're planning on changing is probably less than 20% of the original request, so it's a significantly smaller piece of land and directly adjacent to the property they own. So I know you can't see the map, but if that helps you out a little bit with deciding if we should defer this or deny it, just for your information.
Plus, it's not next to any of the houses.
Appreciate that, Dean. And at the same time, is that really the place to, to put another building? I think that, I regret that the village of Renner is on that side of Highway 115, and I, I think that, that is an improvement, but I think that it's all better to be used for agriculture over there.
All right. So we have the proponent here. If you don't mind introducing yourself and give us your name and your address for the record, that would be helpful.
James Sorum, 3208 East 33rd Street, Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
So the proposed acreage is roughly three acres, you know, which is going to be directly west of the apartment complex and adjacent to our other property that is where the Safari Bar and Grill is located. And according to that old flood, or that flood map that's going to be coming out, this port, this parcel is, I don't think even all the way in it yet, so it really isn't floodplain. Maybe there's a little portion of the northwest corner of it. So we're kind of out of that area, and so we wouldn't, I mean, if we want to build up, we'll build up. I mean, it, it is what it is to get level with the other properties. So as far as backing water up, if you're level, really shouldn't back water up into the, into the homes if you're level with them. So, and this really is the only piece that we really need to do or want to do to expand the Renner Corner as far as storage areas and, and, you know, doing meat and jerky processing. Not so much slaughtering, we won't do any slaughtering or anything like that, it's just specifically for jerky.
Any questions? It's hard to ask questions, we don't really have the full plan in front of us and things. Okay. Is there anybody else, excuse me, anybody else here who would like to speak as a proponent of this proposal? Okay. You can go ahead and sit down.
Thank you.
So if there's anybody here who would like to speak against this proposal, this is your opportunity to come forward. If you just, please come forward, you can go ahead and sit down, Mr. Sorum.
I was going to show her what.
Oh, okay. She, I think she's got it, yeah.
Yeah.
If you would just come forward, give us your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Nancy Rasmussen, 25781, 475th Avenue. I'm the furthest property north of Renner Corner Safari Bar. Our whole field flooded. It's always flooding there in that area. My house is a small house, that's the one that sank with the flood last year. Five inches now today. It's still sinking. I have no basement, no crawl space, nothing to get to my furnace vents. We've been compromising with the furnace vents since we didn't get much help from FEMA. That area is a flood zone. Any building down there will totally destroy my house. There's a lot of other people that were here on the 24th of February, they thought it was finished that night, they're older people, they didn't read the minutes. I never would have known if I have not went on your website and read your minutes that there was another meeting. If they build their little area right there, eventually it will come on by my house. They're not going to leave all that land sent there empty. You bought the land to build on it, they will build on it eventually, no matter how many years it takes, that whole area would be filled up. They own all that property across the street, on the east side, and half of the property on the west side. I don't want no buildings and apartment buildings and stuff by my house. It floods too bad. There's no drainage, no drainage system at all in that area. It's just a field where they've planted crops for years. I just don't feel that losing my house is worth them making a few dollars more by building their property bigger and then in a few years or less, maybe build more apartment buildings or, the land won't sit empty. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? All right. Mr. Sorum, does any rebuttal you would like to provide?
Well, as far as the flooding, when you, when everybody thinks of Renner, they're thinking of floods, floodplain, but the river is a couple miles west of here. What you guys, this new flood map coming out was pertaining to the rainfall with the ice last year. So that flooding did not come from the river, which normally when Renner floods, it's from the river, not from rainfall. When it rained, the drainage underneath 115 was plugged, went over the road into their properties, and then allowed into the field. So it really has nothing to do with the river flooding, you know, and that's, so when you say it floods all the time, it never has, except for last year due to rain.
Any other questions? Commissioner Benega.
Mr. Sorum, excuse me, in the notes, it's talking about the Renner Sanitary Sewer District and your ability to request the connectability, if you will, to the sanitary sewer. And in most cases where there's a sanitary sewer issue in a flood zone, there's some extra cost to the, obviously to the sewer district. But if you did it as an option and made it an onsite wastewater system, are you prepared to do that kind of activity?
I haven't considered doing any offsite wastewater. I, I think we would probably take our chances with the Renner Sanitary District, you know, and if it's denied at that point, then it is what it is.
So you haven't had any conversations with them?
Well, not really, no. We've talked to Mark Cotter and went through the whole process, and then I did let, I'd left a message for the gal at the Renner Sanitary District, but I never received a callback. So they're kind of aware, but we're in a very early stages of doing anything right now.
Anything else? Commissioner Heiburger.
Just raise another couple of comments. One, I'm not opposed to your business because you guys do great business, and I think if an expansion works out, it would be wonderful. I would like to see the floodplains, I mean, everybody says they're here, but we have not seen them, and I think we need to give the opportunity to the people that are concerned that they can still voice their opinions. The other thing that was mentioned in our, in our narrative is that the highway has not approved an access to this property, and so I know we've run into some difficulties with that recently, and that might be another question that's raised, because if we have no access to this property, other than, I mean, and possibly he can just drive through his own property. I really don't want to run into a whole bunch more phone calls again about highway not letting us access property because it's not any fun. And so I think some more questions need to be answered, and that's why I will continue to vote no for this at this time.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
I do have a question.
Karski.
The, trying to remember the lady's name that talked, that resident out there, but what's the process, Scott, for, I mean, when it's appealed, is everybody supposed to know? Yeah, you, Scott, I'm sorry.
You go ahead and sit down, Mr. Sorum. Thank you.
So this isn't considered an appeal, it's just part of the process. And we send out notices to the, we send out, well, the applicant sends out notices, certified mail, to everyone within 500 feet, and upon that notice, it indicates that the Planning Commission will have a hearing, and then that recommendation will be brought to you on this specific date. So that was all spelled out in the hearing notice that went to the adjacent property owners. That's, so that's number one, that's the first method that we use to make sure that residents know. Secondly, when the chairman, the, the Planning Commission Chairman reads through the introduction to the meeting, it's also indicated that this specific item will also have a hearing in front of your board at this time today. So I, I, I understand that sometimes people, maybe at these meetings, aren't paying attention or they're distracted, but we try to on several, in several methods, we attempt to make sure that people know, and also subsequently, we publish a hearing notice. You authorized us to publish a hearing notice in the papers, we do that in four of the papers, so that is yet another method upon which all the subsequent, or the property owners are all notified. So, I mean, we take several steps to make sure that people know that there's a public hearing that's going to be held today in front of your board, so.
So if we take action to delay this hearing, will it be republished again?
It will not.
Or will it not?
It will not be republished, and there's been recent case law that came out of Pennington County that said these, as long as it's continued in front of your board, and we originally had a hearing notice, then we are following, we are following the, the correct course of action, and it's still being considered to have been published properly.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Benega.
Scott, we don't even repost it to show the neighborhood that it has another meeting coming up about changes?
We post a sign on the property that, with a new date.
Okay.
But we don't send out new hearing notices, and we don't, and we, but, and we don't republish it in the paper because that gets expensive. We published it initially, and then we, you are taking an official action that's recorded in the minutes, so there is a paper trail, it's so to say, of, of your actions.
I guess I'm more interested in a community trail than I am a paper trail.
Well, I mean, that, it.
So if we denied it, then there would be that community?
Yes.
Opportunity for input and publication.
Exactly. If you deny it, then the applicant would start basically from step one again, and we would publish, they would come in, make an application, we would have another formal hearing in front of the Planning Commission, letters would be mailed out, a new sign would be put up, et cetera, et cetera, and we would go through the entire process again from start, and everyone would be re-notified by certified mail.
And the six-month delay is not mandated in this case?
No.
Any other questions? Well, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Any further comments? Commissioner Barth.
You know, the Sorums are a wonderful family in our community, and they just have a bit of a lemon with this property, I'm afraid, and I think it would be irresponsible of us to allow a continued destruction, construction, I mean, on, on that side of their property. It's, that apartment building, it's, it's wet in the basement, and I don't believe our floods are going to be getting smaller going forward. In fact, I think they may be getting worse. I'm only sorry we can't move all the properties in Renner to the other side of 115, but I know the sanitary district has issues, they were severely damaged during the flooding this year, and they're on the list for FEMA help, et cetera. That's my comment.
Commissioner Karski.
Okay. If a motion to deny fails, we would have to have a second motion. It does not mean automatic approval, correct?
While Maggie Gillespie, our State's Attorney, comes to the mic and then comment on that.
Your question, Commissioner Karski, was if the motion to deny fails, and then what was the last part of your question?
It would take a subsequent, another motion to either delay it or approve it.
Yeah, I think your options are to deny it today, to approve the denial by the board, or you could defer action as the chair has outlined, based upon the ABADA decision, and, and schedule it for a new date.
I guess one is.
If it helps, Commissioner Karski, I would let you know that I'm going to be in support of denying this.
Okay.
I just think that it, it is important to me that the public have full opportunity. This was a really significant change in the plan, and I think it, it's just appropriate that the public have full notice and full opportunity to weigh in on it.
That helps. And then the second question, if I may, does an approval require at least four votes because it is a rezoning change? Does it just require a simple majority?
Are you asking, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Are you asking if approval of the denial requires?
No. If approval of a rezone, does that require a supermajority?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Benega.
Well, to be blunt, I, there's no way I can approve it right now because I have too many questions about the sanitary sewer issue, the replating, the traffic patterns. Those are too many questions that I think we all have to get a better answer for. So if my choice is defer or deny, and I already know what the decision would be, I think we move ahead with the denial rather than mess around with this too much longer, and I really think we need some of the answers to those questions before we can approve it.
Okay. Anything further? Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny. Roll call, vote, please. Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion to deny passes unanimously. Okay. So that takes us to item 11, which is a public hearing to withdraw application for special event on sale liquor license for the Isaac Walton League. Olivia, good morning.
Good morning. Olivia Larson with the Auditor's Office. So the first one we have here is the Isaac Walton League. They had submitted an retail on-off sale special event liquor license, that's a mouthful, but they have since withdrawn the application because the event that was hosted by Ducks Unlimited has canceled due to COVID-19. So for this item, no action is necessary, but you just need to recognize that the withdrawal was received and allow anybody to speak that was here for the hearing.
Okay. It's one of those odd motion, odd proceedings. So is there anyone here who is interested or would like to come forward and speak about the withdrawal of this on-sale liquor license? Shockingly, there is none, so we recognize this.
All right. And then the second one, we have a public hearing to consider the special event on-sale liquor license for Prairie Pasta, Inc. Their event is scheduled to take place June 6, 2020. It's a wedding being held at the Riviera Event Center. This application was submitted to the Sheriff's Office, State's Attorney, and Planning and Zoning, and I've received no concerns.
Any questions for Olivia? This is a public hearing. If there's somebody in favor, a proponent of this, this is your opportunity to come forward and speak.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Is there anybody opposed to this? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please. Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So this takes us.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, Commissioner Barth.
I just want to apologize, I disconnected myself trying to hit the mute button. I hit the, the button to hang up, it was, it's technology.
It is part of what we're all learning. I was on a. I was on a large conference call yesterday where multiple people did that, so.
Aye for one.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item 13, which is a budget hearing to consider a resolution for the 2020 budget supplements. Kim Adamson, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. We've brought before you today a list of items to be considered for supplements to the 2020 budget. These are items that are 2019 budgeted projects that were not completed or billings weren't received in time to pay against the 2019 budget. We have a summary, you've been provided with a summary of all of the requests as long, as well as the memos from department directors who are making these requests. We have a total of $761,550.41 in the general fund. And in special revenue funds, we have $15,299,382.11 requested. The most significant items on the supplement list are in the highway department, $3,398,982.81 for road projects that were not, we've entered contract, into contracts, not completed the work in 2019. And secondly, the capital projects budget, $11,400,000 for completion of the jail construction. If there are any questions about specific requests, the departments making requests are available to answer those.
Any questions? This is similar to what we have done in past years. There are no questions for Kim. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who is opposed to these, or anyone who'd like to speak in favor of these, I apologize. Budget supplements, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, if there's anyone opposed to these budget supplements? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you so much. Okay, that takes us to item 14, which would be to authorize the chair to sign the joint powers agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for the new accessible housing advisory board. Loy Montes, good morning.
Good morning. So we are just here this morning to ask your signature, I guess your agreement to move forward with dissolving the housing, the homeless advisory board, that's been in existence for quite some time, and then work on developing a new joint board that would be called the Accessible Housing Advisory Board. We have Shelley Andrew here with the city of Sioux Falls. She's the housing programs manager, who will walk you through a little bit about the development of that joint board and answer any questions that you may have in regards to that.
Thank you. Carrie Benz and Shelley have worked hard and long on this, and I know Carrie's serving as part of the emergency operations center this morning, so thank you, Shelley, for being here.
Yes, commissioners. Shelley Andrew, housing manager with the city of Sioux Falls. Thank you for the opportunity to come to you today to talk about the joint powers agreement between the county, Minnehaha County, and the city of Sioux Falls. It has been a very thorough process where we made sure that both parties were comfortable with the details outlined in this agreement. What this board will ultimately be able to do is still serve the mission of the homeless advisory board while being able to have advisory opinion over the housing division budget. So that way, when we are trying to address the needs of the homeless, that we can leverage the federal funds that the city of Sioux Falls receives in order to make good point decisions and then be able to provide some solutions that we may be able to find. So homelessness will ultimately be a large part of what this board continues to address, but it will, I think, join up with the larger vision of making sure that we have affordable housing at all levels throughout Sioux Falls.
Are there questions for Shelley?
Yes.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, sorry. I was just going to say, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Hiberger.
So I know this has been a really long process, and I think what you guys have done is great, but I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
This is an 11-member board, and it's, the project is, or the positions are paid for 50/50 through Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls. And I'm just wondering why the five city, why the five citizens at large, hi, are all representatives of having to be a resident of city of Sioux Falls when Minnehaha County pays 50% of the salary or 50% of the position? And, and it's representing all of Minnehaha County, it's representing Brandon, Del Rapids, and so I'm wondering where that went, and then I have a second question, too.
Sure. And, and to be honest, that may have just been an oversight as far as reviewing that language. Certainly, we would be open to any applicant that would apply at those five members of large to be representative of the Sioux Falls MSA, including those outlined communities as well. So if you do move to approve, that's definitely a change that we would be milling to make.
Yeah, I do think that was an oversight. There are multiple drafts of this that went around, and we had talked about changing that to be residents of Minnehaha County, so I think we could do that.
And my, my second question was, I know they have a member of Lincoln County on here, and I know that's kind of still in the air, but I would suggest that if Lincoln County is a part of this, that they should pay a third, and then it should be a third, a third, a third, because I don't think that they should get a spot at the table for free. And so if Lincoln County is going to be a part of this, then I think that they pony up their participation in the project. And so I, I'm going to leave that alone, but I think that that needs to be addressed.
And I would say that that has been discussed with Lincoln County. This was an opportunity for them to get more involved in it, but not have control over the organization so they could see the benefit to their citizens with the idea that at, at some point, this would be revised, so they would be equal partners.
Thank you. I guess then my only suggestion would be just, just to, on section 4 dash 2, to strike that who must be residents of the city of Sioux Falls, five citizens at large, and that would be my only suggestion. And does it need to be five citizens at large within Minnehaha County? I don't know, so.
Other comments? Commissioner Karski.
And not to pick it apart, but do those citizens, who appoints those? I mean, everybody else is appointed by either commission chair or school board, et cetera, but who is going to appoint those citizens? It's not addressed in there from what I can see, is it?
It is, actually. It would be, those applications would be reviewed by the existing board members of the appointed positions. They would make recommendation, and then it would have to be the commission chair and the mayor that approves those recommendations from the board to be on that advisory board.
Section 3.3, total 4.3. It's amazing how the rubber meets the road when you start putting words on paper and try to think through how all of these things work. And there was a fair bit of time spent trying to think about that and wordsmithing, which resulted in a number of different drafts, and I think might be explained, that oversight that Commissioner Hiberger noted. So what we would be asked to do here today is approve the joint powers agreement. The bylaws were provided so folks could see kind of what the preliminary idea is, but the, the board itself would be ultimately responsible for approving the bylaws.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? You know, this is really just, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Benega.
This is a, just a pet peeve, so don't take it personally.
Sure.
I think there's a difference between accessible and affordable. I know you guys have had multiple conversations about that, and that's fine because it will get addressed, but for me, that needs to be highlighted somehow because frankly, in the other position I have, it's always addressed that way, and frankly, I'd like to see some more public relations kinds of activity, if we call it affordable and accessible, but that's my own personal peeve, so I'm not going to change this for that reason. But I think you guys have done an awesome job of reorganizing this for the right purpose.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, well, I'd entertain a motion to approve with the amendments noted by Commissioner Hiberger.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. Okay, that takes us to item 15, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a land purchase agreement to acquire right-of-way for Highway Project MC 1710. Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. This project is the 149 reconstruction project scheduled for construction starting in 2022. We've been actively working on the right-of-way acquisition for this project, and we have another right-of-way purchase agreement for you today. This one is a very small corner just west of the Tri Valley School on County Highway 149, and I think it's .006 acres, so very, very small parcel. This brings us to temporary easements on the project. We have 37 of 40, permanent drainage easements 15 of 15, and eight slots, which this will be, is currently at 19 of 22. I'll stand by for any questions if you have any specific questions.
Any questions?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Yes.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 16, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a land purchase agreement to acquire right-of-way for Highway Project MC 20-01.
Commissioners, on one of our culvert projects this year, in meeting with the landowners talking about the projects acquiring temporary construction easements, we asked on the corridor of County Highway 105 if the landowner would be interested in selling 17 feet of right-of-way to get us from the 66 feet of statutory right-of-way to the 100, or to the 50-foot swath of right-of-way on the east side of the road. And they were agreeable to this, and so for just over 2,600 feet, about a half of a mile, or just under a half of a mile, we're going to be able to purchase a right-of-way. This is more of a corridor preservation type of purchase, so when we go to reconstruct this roadway in the future, we don't have to go back to this landowner and acquire this right-of-way. I could stand by for any questions.
Questions? DJ? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Just strikes me that these, this meeting is a good example of how the business of the county continues despite all the disruption in the world right now. So thank you all for all your work, so. Okay, so that takes us to item 17, which is to consider a resolution to approve two property tax payment proposals for records 025261 and 062441. Good morning.
Thank you. Madam Chair, good morning again. Bob Litz from the auditor's office, and today I have two resolutions creating payment plans for back taxes for two separate property owners as follows. RDID 25261 for the amount of $7,916.90, and the second one is RDID 62441 for the amount of $8,490.20. I've been working with each of these owners of record to create this payment, these create payment plans, and both of them have agreed to do that. The 2019 taxes payable in 2020 are also included in the payment plans. So today, the action that I'm requesting is to approve the property tax payment plan resolution for records 25261 and 62441.
I'd entertain a motion.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Commissioner Barth.
Aye. Hit the wrong button. Aye.
Benega.
I just have to say, I missed the human contact with you, Jeff, but you are providing entertainment. Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
And Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We appreciate, oh, I'm sorry, what?
I just have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
So I, I talked, the paying of taxes, the property taxes, I know there's been some questions that have been raised about that. I have talked to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Executive Director, who went up to the Department of Revenue yesterday and had a long conversation with them. At this point, there is no plans to delay people's property taxes, and on the due date, they are due, and interest will start accruing at that point if people don't pay them. And he said it was a very long, lengthy conversation, but that is what is going to happen.
And just to give some context to that, I mean, taxpayers have been reaching out to us here at the county, to the commissioners individually, looking for some, some relief, some delay in the deadline for the property taxes that are due the end of April. We have looked into it and had our state's attorney's office look at it. We, at the county level, have no control over that. That's all set at the state, in state statute. And so, as Commissioner Hiberger said earlier, that if you would like to see some grace period, some staggering of the, of the penalties, so, which frankly, I think there's some good reasons to do that under the current circumstances, then once again, you need to contact your legislatures and the governor's office about that. So we unfortunately have no control over that. Anything? Oh, Commissioner Karski.
I don't know if it's the right time to ask this question, but what about partial payments?
A partial, go ahead, Commissioner.
I don't think that we have any statutory obligation, or direction in that area either. This is a Department of Revenue. And Bob, maybe you have a better comment on that.
I'm probably getting a little bit out of my purview here, but in the treasurer's office, they do not accept parcels on delinquent tax parcels unless they do have a tax deed payment plan. And what we do is we will accrue those, those amounts according to the payment plan until we have enough to pay off one year, and then we go in there and we pay off a select year. And, you know, the first one, the first year is always going to hang out there, as is the last year. They're going to be the last ones to get paid. But, yeah, so the treasurer's office can't, but if we do a payment plan like this, then the people who are delinquent can.
Okay. Any further questions? Slightly off-topic, but I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, so that takes us to item 18, and we have a presentation on the sheriff's office jail division. As you know, we have set a calendar at the beginning of this year to have various department heads come forward and give us presentations as we prepare and look forward to the budgeting season. The sheriff and the warden were very gracious, put together a great presentation, and still offered, given the heavy agenda that we had to delay their presentation. And I, given the fact that we're going to likely cancel a couple of meetings in April to try to limit people's interactions, and we're going to back up, I asked that they go ahead and come today, so we really appreciate you being here with us this morning, Warden.
Mike Matson, Warden of the jail, happy to be here. We put together a little presentation for you about the jail. So, spacebar here, or you got it, Trish?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, you're fine. Basically, where we've been, where we're going. You can see I got some pictures of our current jail, Russell Street, the correction center, and then the, an image of what a completed project is going to look like. 2018 correction center fire impacts during the 2019 jail population increase substantially due to the fire at the CCC, we had to make adjustments to our jail housing capacity to mitigate the increased need of jail beds. Our housing capacity increased, was increased by 52, and that consisted of converting a 24-bed housing unit into a 48-bed housing unit, and we added additional bunks to our dorm areas, making, adding seven to each dorm area. During this time, we also, that's okay, I don't have it memorized. During this time, we also rented beds from other counties due to the lack of onsite jail bed space, and we've never, in my recollection, we've never had to do that before. Then in August of 2019, we occupied our new fifth floor, the vertical expansion, which was fantastic. That consists of four 32-bed housing units. That's 128 new jail beds, bringing the total jail capacity to 550. the total jail capacity to 556. We were able to move the 28 added bunks to the existing dorms out and had additional space for 100 more inmates. And we no longer needed to rent beds from other counties. Additionally, the capacity allowed us to resume renting beds to neighborhood jurisdictions, which was also good. Rent because rental beds equal revenue. October of 2019, we started our housing contract with Lincoln County, guaranteeing them 45 beds daily. We increased our US Marshal inmate rental beds, averaging 22 beds per day for October, November, December of 2019. The result of all of that equaled $898,935 extra from what our projected revenue was for 2019. We continue to rent beds to outside agencies for $97.34 a day for county contracts and $97 for any federal contract.
Warden, can I just interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
I just want to point out, I mean, we had a lot of revenue. There is a lot of offsetting expenses too. When we have those prisoners, there's a lot of, so I don't want the public to go away with thinking that we pocketed a million dollars in cash that was not offset by cost.
We still have the cost of our operation too, so.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I interject a question on that too, because, I mean, there's been some questions about that if you have revenue coming in, then the cost to Minnehaw County per our inmates has just dropped the bottom out. And if we get enough people coming in and renting our beds, then basically it's not costing us anything. I just would like you to dispel or at least explain that because that is never the kind of conversation that we've had in Minnehaw County, because you still have expenses. And just because you're making revenue, doesn't make your own housing of your own people cheaper.
Correct. And you know, we have an obligation to house Minnehaw County inmates. And that's not going to change. We have to have our jail and we need to operate our jail. The fact that we have extra space to rent beds provides a service to them because they have a place to go. And on top of it, it's supplementing our costs for operating our facility as well. So it's not just making money off of it, it's offsetting expense.
Because in fact, that daily rental rate is a rate that's calculated under a formula
Correct.
provided to us that really just captures all of our costs, does not provide like a 20% override for profit or anything like that.
Correct. We're not in the jail business to make money. I mean, that's not how it works. We're not a privately owned facility. We're a county-owned facility and we do what we need to do to meet our costs and provide the services and programs that we have.
Thank you.
Average daily population. 2018, our average daily population was fairly consistent through the year. You can clearly see the impact that the fire at the correction center had on our daily, average daily population when that hit September, October. 2019, we were more consistent with our population. And there's a definite increase in the fourth quarter, which goes hand in hand with occupying that fifth floor. 2020 projections, our rental beds should remain fairly consistent in 2020, where we continue to average 80 to 90 rental beds per day. 2020 will also bring jail expansion project to completion. We continue to develop work on policy development, progress, process changes that will be implemented when we occupy the new space. Construction is ahead of schedule and under budget at this point. We plan on gaining access to the expansion to start staff training sometime in June. And our projected operating date is sometime in July. Transitioning to the new expansion, initially, we will occupy the new intake and transitional housing areas to start with. This is going to be a significant operational change for us in how roughly 20,000 persons are processed in and out of our facility annually. A new jail courtroom will significantly change how inmates are transported for their initial court appearance. Utilizing that jail courtroom will greatly reduce the number of inmates that have to be escorted to the courthouse on a daily basis. We will hold morning circuit court arraignments as well as 1:30 initial appearances for jail, in the jail courtroom. This will account for roughly 60 to 100 inmates daily who will appear in court without ever leaving the jail. So we're really looking forward to that. The kind of last piece of the puzzle is once the jail expansion is complete, we need to replace the existing security electronics in our existing building. And that will begin, this is the final step. And that upgrade brings it to the one vendor that we have, Accurate Control. So everything's going to be operating on the same system. This process is going to begin and continue through the remainder of 2020. And during this process, the jail's total bed capacity will fluctuate as we have to vacate and occupy different areas of the jail to accommodate the security electronics upgrade. But we don't think that this is going to greatly affect the overall capacity and our ability to maintain rental beds. Staffing, this is kind of the fun part. The jail staffing situation has recently shown some improvement. Our 2018 turnover rate was 23%. In 2019, we reduced it to 15%. We were all pretty excited to see that. We're hoping that we can continue that trend. At the present time, the jail staff to our budgeted staffing authorizations. We have a few staff to hire in the fourth quarter of 2020 to prepare for the opening of the expansion. But the jail's current staffing situation is in a favorable position as we prepare to move into the expanded facility. To give a little perspective, in 2019, we had six new hired classes during the year. The picture there is the largest class that we've had in quite a few years. And so far in 2020, we have completed one new hired class and we just began a new one yesterday. And that's the presentation. Any questions?
Commissioner Heiburger?
I have one question again. Go back to the average daily population page. And as you mentioned, that in September, we saw that jump in average daily population. Is that because we're renting beds? Or is that because now we have more space and we're just throwing more people in jail?
I don't think that's the case at all. I think that's when we started bringing on some US Marshal inmates, some Lincoln County inmates. We weren't at that point ready to take the full 45, but we said, you know, give us some and we'll gradually get up there. And then in October, we started with the 45.
Thank you. So the numbers basically reflect that we, it's not just we're all of a sudden throwing Minnehaw County people in jail.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bennega?
Mike, the federal prisoners that we have, are we obligated to take those? Or if there's an alternative, we can send them to a different location?
We have no obligation to take them. They work with us very well. I can think of a few times where we've had to vacate a dorm area to accommodate some construction and give them a week's notice and they can move their people out. We like having them in the facility because it's more convenient for them, for their US Marshal inmates that have federal court in Sioux Falls. So just trying to be a good partner.
The only reason I ask that question is I was asked that this weekend, and frankly, I could not remember the answer. We don't have a minimum and the maximum, I know, is based on the population of the.
Based on our population. We've been trying to keep it around that 20, 20 mark. It fluctuates a little bit. But it's depending on our situation. They've been very good to work with.
Right. Thank you.
I will say, when we were so full and we didn't, weren't able to take inmates for any of the surrounding counties or the federal, I had several federal judges mention to me how difficult it was for them to manage when they had no place to keep prisoners locally. So, I mean, it's just an opportunity for us to be good partners and to collaborate with other governmental entities in the area.
I agree.
All right. Well, that was a really good presentation. I wondered if you wanted to take this opportunity, I am putting you on the spot here a little bit, just to talk about, it was publicized yesterday that there was an inmate in Hughes County that came down with COVID-19. If you just want to give a little bit of an update on the work that you guys have been doing to prepare for that situation here.
Sure. So roughly a month and a half, two months ago, we started a screening tool for anybody coming inside the facility. Since the situation has evolved, we've ramped up cleaning efforts throughout the facility. And then we actually started a more robust screening tool a couple of weeks ago that identifies anybody obviously coming in the facility. And then if officers, correction staff in the jail are familiar with the screening tool, so if they recognize anything, then they're going to get that person away from everybody else and call our jail medical staff. To this point, we've been very fortunate. We've been a little hyper vigilant on it because we want to keep it out of the jail due to the risk of spreading in those close quarters. We don't have the opportunity to do social distancing within the jail. It's very difficult. But with the measures that we've implemented, we're doing very good at this point. Programs with the decisions that the courts have made, we've changed PBTs to remote breath tests, so our staff doesn't have to hold the PBT machine out and get blown on. So just little things have been helpful along the way. And hopefully, we can maintain our current situation. And we don't have very many people in contact restriction at this point. We haven't had any positives in our jail. And we're doing fairly well.
Well, thank you. I know you guys have spent a lot of time thinking through process and, you know, preparing for the worst. And thankfully, that those plans so far have really proven good results. And, you know, I just want the citizens to know that we care about keeping all of our citizens healthy, those that are free to decide if they want to obey rules about social distancing and those that are in the jail and don't have that freedom to decide that. And so we take all of those responsibilities seriously. And I appreciate the work that you do over there.
Thank you. My staff is doing a fantastic job with this and they should be committed on that, too.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. I think that takes us, you have the next item as well, which goes along with our theme for the day of COVID-19. Item 19 is to authorize the chair to sign the temporary amendment to the jail housing agreement with Lincoln County.
Right. So we talked about being a good partner. This goes hand in hand with that. We have our contract with Lincoln County at 45 beds. Given the times and the noted decrease in population and number of resties that we have, and we are assuming Lincoln County is going to have that as well, we felt it appropriate to work with them in dropping the guaranteed bed rate down to 25 with the projection that likely they're going to, their numbers are going to drop. There is a slight decrease at this point, but I foresee it going further. The language in the contract still allows us to bill per inmate bed above the 25. So it's just no different than the 45, but we bring it down to a guarantee of 25.
And it's the temporary.
It's a temporary amendment. We put it out May 31. And obviously, depending on the situation, we might have to extend it again. But I'd come for you for that as well.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? I think we've all been busy doing things that have already been reported on. New business? Any new business? Any old business?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Hey, I've just been getting a number of calls lately on property evaluations, including from people who missed the deadline to appeal their evaluation. I've had one that went up $75,000, one that went down $37,000, and another one that went up by $36,000. And it's, I don't think people mind having increases, but it's the dramatic increases that seem to be happening. And certainly, it's unusual to get a call where they're astounded that they had a reduction in their value of $37,000. And I need to find out more about this, but I want, I want the citizens to know that all of us are interested in this kind of an issue. And we're all trying to learn more about it as we go forward.
Thank you. I know we had an opportunity to meet with Chris Lilla, Commissioner Bennega, and I did last Tuesday. I know he's met with other commissioners as well. And so we certainly, we are very attuned to these issues. And we do want people to bring forward their concerns. I know Chris Lilla and his staff are very willing to sit and visit with people about concerns as well. And I would encourage you to reach out to him. So. Anything else on old business? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
This is way too much fun, but I'll vote yes.
Aye. Motion is adjourned. Thank you again, Commissioner Barth, for trying out our technology and joining us remotely. All right. Thank you, everyone.